I'd hate to interrupt the conversation between David and Noel. We'd like to begin this work session. Madam Clerk, would you please begin?
Yes, Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Lind.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welker.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda is proposed.
Second. Should be made with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. This is for a full discussion. John.
Good evening, Mayor Hard and council members. We, Bob Lenzgau, Fog Inspector out of Waste Management, and myself, interim, John LaPointe, interim wastewater superintendent, are here to resume our discussions about the fog program. Last time we met, we had a ordinance change in front of the council that would change the definition, modify the definition a little bit, of food service establishments. And there was also in front of the council, a resolution setting fees and penalties. At that council meeting, the motion was made to table until further consideration. And we have since had two meetings of the mayor's ad hoc committee on the fog program. One was held on February 24th, and the second one was held on March 2nd. And I believe you have minutes of those meetings in your packet, so you've hopefully had a chance to review that. Won't bore you with all the details there. But I'll just summarize by saying that we looked at the ordinance definition and made one adjustment to what was in front of you at the council meeting a few weeks ago by adding a sentence in there saying that if you were not licensed by Blackhawk County Public Health, but that you were still found to be contributing significant fat soils and grease to the sewer system, that you could still, you would still fall under the fog program as administered by Waste Management. And the only other, and then on the, that was the only change to the resolution, or I mean to the ordinance, and then on the resolution on fees, we left the dollar amounts in there at $50 per inspection fee and the penalties that we had before. And we added one section that talked about the maximum amount of penalties, referring back to another portion of the ordinance which establishes those. Instead of restating that amount in there, we just referenced back to Section 8-3-14, which talks about maximum penalties. So, that's a very brief summary of what we did in those two meetings. I'd like to open it up for discussion.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir. John, one of the questions I have is, I see the unlicensed part of that. How are you going to determine? I mean, is it just if something plugs up, you'll do an investigation that way? Or are you just going to go out and start investigating?
I think one way or another, either we have a plugged line that results in a backup or an overflow or something, and we come out, and during the course of investigation, we find that there's a significant amounts of fat soils and grease, and we trace it back that way. And then we find out maybe there is somebody contributing to our sewer system that's not licensed through the Health Department. And we find them either through a plugging or a problem, or we're doing, we have an ongoing program of televising our sewer lines. Every five years, every sewer line we clean and televise, and they could be determined just by routine inspection of the lines.
So you do have the ability to go back to a specific business and track it to them as far as if there is a plug?
The new equipment that the crews have out there is, is a very good televising, that you'll be able to see potentially where the problem started. It may not be as easy to define exactly what lateral the problem is coming from, but it'll help us narrow down and do an investigation. And it's the hopes that you'll find it through a process of televising and, and working with Craig Clark and the other people that would know that, what's happening out there in the systems.
Okay, thank you.
In the, in the community, what they're doing for food service.
What would be an example of somebody doing that? Who had, who's ever done that before? Are we targeting somebody, a church, the cattle congress? I mean, have we ever had that problem before? That's not a FSE?
I would say that, I'm going to ask Bob Lenzgau to come up. Maybe he'd know a better answer. But I, in the short period I've been there, we have not identified anybody by that process of, that they've caused a plugging, and we've gone out and found somebody that wasn't already known. But Bob could maybe shed some more light on that.
Bob Lenzgau, Fog Inspector. We have not found anything where that. Been called by the camera crew to come out and look at a pipe, 12-inch pipe, was halfway full of grease. So the camera crew, working with them, was so far as the only way that we've been able to directly go to somebody like that. Besides that, we're not targeting anybody. We're just kind of sitting back waiting to see if there is a problem. Excuse me. That's, that's when we'll go towards them and call, or force them to be licensed or get a grease trap or whatever.
But we've never had a problem with anybody that wasn't an FSE?
I can't say in my time.
Why would we put that in the ordinance? That's exactly what we didn't want in the ordinance. Because then the wastewater superintendent gets involved in making decisions that he may not want to make. I mean, he's going to say, "Cattle Congress, you're plugging up the lines, and we're going to find you." That's going to be, he may not want to be in that position, is all what I'm saying.
Yeah, and we're not going to know unless they're out there doing the camera, use cameras to, you know, clean lines.
I think we should keep it simple and just leave it at FSE period. That's what I think.
Yeah.
And when we had these meetings, are we going to have more meetings? Going to have stakeholder meetings?
Go ahead, yeah.
No, at this time, we just had the two ad hoc committee meetings, and that group had consensus, and so, no, we didn't go to call any other stakeholder meetings.
Okay.
Tom, if, if I may. Tom, we were trying to eliminate the possibility of, of going after churches, for example. The way we've, way we have it written now, that churches will be exempt from it unless they are creating a problem.
But doesn't mean, are, are the churches creating a problem right now?
We have not had any problem at churches yet. It's just the churches weren't in the definition of the FSE. We kind of put them out and just going towards licensed food service establishments for the fact that if we get a small church that might have 25, 50 members, and we're going to require them to put a $5,000 trap into their building, we're going to bust the churches up. Unless there's a problem. But I mean, we can't go to every church and say, "You have to have a trap." Some smaller churches, things like that. We're trying to-
That's what I mean. Why don't we just leave it out there? Just have FSEs. Then it's simple. Seems like we're making an ordinance too complicated.
Well, that's, I agree.
There, Bob, if I remember right, the conversation that just floated around was that there were, I think there are some churches that do, that are licensed, aren't there?
There were a few on my list from the Health Department to licensing from the Health Department, but what we talked about is they're probably licensed because they vend, they vend down at Barbecue Lou, they vend at Irish Fest, things like that, they're required to have license.
And, and the, so the licensing and the facilities as described in the first paragraph, there were two parts of that. They had to be licensed, and then they had to be one of those type of facilities. And concern that I had encountered with talking to a couple of the FSEs that are licensed is, what about those that, that aren't licensed that would cause a problem? So this addition of those four lines there was to deal with that issue, not saying that they would be automatically included as an FSE, but only if they created a problem and they were unlicensed. And to, to me, Tom, that's a catch-all. That, that's one of those, well, we don't got to go back and change the ordinance in the future because it's there right now. This language would apply to them, any that violated this.
I think we though we should just start with a simple ordinance. See how it works. If we run into this problem, then we can add it. It just, that just, I just think we're looking, and we originally talked about that, the superintendent didn't want to, anything to do with that, him making the decision to go after somebody. He just didn't want to get into that. And then I agree with that, because I think now you're going to have-
Councilman Lind, this is, this is not the superintendent going after anybody. This only comes up-
Determined by the superintendent.
This only comes up if there's a problem.
I mean, the superintendent has designated, which would be me, if there was a problem, then we would go after them. That's the only reason. I mean, if they, we're not going after them unless we have a backup, sewer backup, some sort of plugs, things like that. Besides that, we're not, we're not going after them. 130 churches out there, all different sizes. Like I say, if we go after every one of them, tell them they got to put, spend $4,000 or $5,000. Most of them have residential kitchens. It's going to be a major remodel for them. And that's the reason I'm against making them all do it. The bigger churches with commercial kitchens, we can look at that. But until we have a problem with them, they cause a sewer backup, block it, we aren't going to target them.
Which they never have.
That we know of yet. I mean, like I said, this is just since July. We don't know.
Was there any consideration given to involving any of the stakeholders in this discussion? I mean, I thought we've talked in the past about when we put these committees together. I mean, I'm looking at these four, four names, and I'm, I'm not aware that any of these four people have ever been involved in a food establishment.
I'm not sure what we're talking about.
Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be wise to have some buy-in from the people that this is going to directly affect and get their thoughts and get their input? I mean, it just seems to me that would make a lot better sense. And we've done that in some other instances. I think that probably would have been wise.
And what would that have gained? I don't understand where you're coming from, that just because we've never owned a restaurant, that we wouldn't understand how to-
Well, you wouldn't understand, you wouldn't understand what effect it's going to have on the operation of that restaurant, Ron. That's, that's the point.
Somebody has to pay for the program. Yes or no?
Would you like to put that somebody out of business? Yes or no?
$50 a year. That's so many cents a day.
For starters, we got to change. You guys got a restaurant in your mind. Throw that restaurant out. We're talking convenience stores, we're talking grocery stores, we're talking schools. You got to throw that restaurant out and just figure food service establishments. We're talking more than just restaurants. And you're getting your information probably from restaurants. But you got to look at convenience stores out there, the schools, yeah, hospitals, grocery stores, there's, there's a lot of them that you're not looking at.
Do they pay higher sewer rates than most people because their water usage?
I believe they go by the percentage of water use.
So they already pay more?
I'm not positive, but I think, we looked at this once, and I believe that's what it was.
So they already pay to the system? They pay for the sewer?
Yes.
They don't pay to treat their extra waste, which is fat soil and greases, though. They pay the same thing as we pay for running our washing machines.
Oh, they do? They pay just whatever you do residentially?
Right.
Really? The hospitals do? That's, that's a heck of a deal.
Yeah, that's correct. We only have a very few significant industries that get anything other than the conventional rate that's applied to every, every user.
You mean the rate, not the amount? The rate's maybe the same. The amount is significantly higher, I think, maybe for a hospital.
The amount is based on how many gallons of water you purchase from the waterworks. But the rate is the same, so they don't have to pay an additional fee for their heavier duty, I'm going to call it heavier duty waste, because they're, the point of the fat soil and greases is to focus on businesses that generate a higher proportion of fat soil and grease in their waste stream. Is that correct?
I would like to add, as far as stakeholders are concerned, Mr. Lind, is that we did receive numerous emails from different stakeholders, and tried to respond in that fashion, and those were very helpful. And although they did not sit across the table with us, I felt that there was good back and forth between some, some of the stakeholders and, and us by way of email.
And, and by the way, I appreciate the comments you made to a couple stakeholders who copied me on responses. Those were very professional, and I think those people really appreciated their involvement in the decision.
In that, yes, thank you. In that regard, we tried to communicate and inform as best we could. So while I have a moment, we did have some data to hand out, and I would like to make a correction, as this came off the presses today, and we realized just now as we looked at it, that we had reported everything in gallons, units of gallons, and it was actually in pounds. So just note that. But the, the point of these graphs that I, that I would like to make is that we didn't have a program in 2014, and it's reflective of how much fat soils and grease was taken out to the lagoon, the Anarobic Lagoon. In the middle of 2015, the program got going full steam as far as Bob going out and doing inspections. And we had a 56.41% increase in fat soils and grease being disposed of at the Anarobic Lagoon. And so far, we're on track to do even more than that in 2016, as this graph shows. And I believe the program is working, and, and I think that everybody out there, Bob's doing a good job of getting out there and informing people that they need to get this out of our system, and it's working. And even though right now we don't have any fees attached to it or penalties, I think everybody out there is, is doing a good job, as evidenced by the data. And also, we, we have only had one grease, fat soil and grease related backup since Bob started his job last summer. And I think that, again, is because people are doing their job.
These are, these are pounds that are trucked to that lagoon out by IBP?
Yes.
Tyson?
Right. Yeah.
All right, any other, any other questions?
Motion for adjournment.
Second. Should be made with a proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
Let's call our Finance Committee to order. Today is March 21st. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Yes. Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Here. Motion to approve the agenda and the minutes of March 14th, 2016, as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the minutes. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, same sign. New business, we only have one travel request today.
One travel request. Investigator Paul to attend mobile device evidence class, Madison, Wisconsin, May 15th through the 17th of 16, not to exceed $613.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this travel request. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing now, all in favor.
Could I ask, is that for continuing yet a required certification?
Dan Truca, Director of Safety. It's not for certification, but I would consider it for continuing yet because with mobile devices such as iPads, iPods, our telephones, it's rapidly evolving and ever-changing technology. And Officer Investigator Paul is able to keep up with that technology to keep retrieving evidence from these devices. And we get a cornucopia of evidence from them, even in simple investigations of fraud or theft, even investigations outside child pornography.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second on this. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, a motion passes. Pre-oths.
Pre-oths, we have Building Department, $2,510 for spring and fall cleanup, monthly maintenance for Phi Sullivan Brothers Convention Center, Fire Department, $1,785 for preventative maintenance contract for seven cardiac heart monitors, Leisure Services, $6,174 for comprehensive spring tune-up of all six street plaza beds, including removal of all dead plant material, weeds, old mulch, installation, new mulch, and trimming of grasses. Leisure Services, $24,567.20 for one Smithco Sweepstar V72 Big Vac. Leisure Services, $2,667 for golf course supplies from Standard Golf. Sewer Department, $2,958 for three plug valves for sludge storage pump building. Sewer Department, $8,462 for onsite tech service to charge out SCRs and evaluate electrical starters on satellite and Easton blowers. Street Department, $17,449.30 to repair a rental motor grader. Sewer Department, $7,495.73 accident repair for number 191420. Traffic Operations, $9,0198 for traffic awareness campaign in Cedar Valley Theater audiences, ongoing DOT project with Hellman since 2007, city matching of funds.
Do we need a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the pre-oths. Is there any discussion or questions on any of those?
Mr. Chairman, explanation on the Big Vac for $24,567.20.
Looks like a replacement, correct?
Yes, Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. I think I got the funny mic tonight. This is a, you'll see we're trading in a 1991 unit. It's a little bit different unit. This is a Vac as opposed to a Pull Behind Sweepster, but the whole idea is for cleaning off greens and leaves and so forth, and it's an essential part of golf course maintenance.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Just a minute, Mr.?
Mr. Chairman, the Street Department, repair of a rental motor grader for $17,449.
Mark Rice, Public Works Director. This was a result of an accident with one of the motor graders while plowing snow. It hit a manhole, flipped the manhole cover out of the street, landed on top of the circle and broke the circle that runs the blade assembly. They cover the normal servicing, but we're required to repair any damage done to rental graders. Kind of a freak accident.
Anyone else? Did you have something, Dave?
No, he had the same two.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Tom?
On the Leisure Services, the cleaning for the Sixth Street Plaza, is that all contract labor? Or what, is that her parts?
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services. Yes, that's contracted labor.
I thought that was run by an organization that made income on that plaza. Why don't they take care of the maintenance? Or is the agreement says we may take care of that?
Well, there is some revenue that comes in off of that. It all goes into the general fund budget, so I guess it would be, maybe that'd be a question for Michelle, but the revenue does come in, it comes into another departmental budget, but I don't know, Michelle, if you want to add to that at all. We do have some budgeted money for contract maintenance for downtown.
Michelle Weidner, CFO. So, the Expo grounds can be reserved to be used, and I'm dredging up, trying to remember right now, Riverloop Association Inc. would always get that revenue. They would do some of it.
The Riverloop Association, my understanding is, gets the revenue from events. That revenue from events helps to offset an employee's wages who actually manages the events, is that correct? That's my understanding. Again, it's in another department.
Correct, and yes, we are reimbursed for some of the salary, but person that does that, for Riverloop Association Inc. But the grounds do belong to the city. We have always had Leisure Services doing all maintenance to the grounds.
Correct. We don't run the events, so that revenue does not come into our budget. It'd be different like Young Arena where all the revenue comes in, and then we offset revenue, or expenses with revenue. It's two separate budgets. About the best I can explain it.
Could the council get an accounting of the income and expenses of all of this? Because we have no idea what you're talking about right now.
The expenses you have in my budget, that's all there, and these come to you day after day.
So we could get the income as well?
The events that would come out of Cultural and Arts.
So we could get that rundown of the income on those?
It actually goes to an independent corporation, which is Riverloop Associated, Incorporated. But I think, you know, I don't know.
We'll have to make the request. I don't see Kent here. We will have to ask about Riverloop Association, Inc.
Sure.
The agreement today, necessarily for, struggling with putting pieces together, we'll get some information to you when we can talk, when we understand. I could say it better, I just don't have it.
We'll be in touch and try to get you that information.
Has Main Street taken over some of the operation?
No.
I mean, they're talking to the board meeting, are they about running the market?
They were going to be working with the farmer's market, but they've withdrawn, they're not going to be doing that, no.
And if they had, I think they just would have been, they're almost, would be like a vendor to us, operating an event on that grounds. So, at this point, we were not contracting, I don't believe, with Main Street to directly operate the Expo grounds or anything like that.
I think you're correct there.
That was my understanding, anyway. But yeah, we'll get you what information we can.
So again, it involves a couple different departments and a private corporation. We'll try to get that together for you and explain it, okay?
Anyone else? If not, we have a motion and a second on the pre-oths. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same.
I'm going to vote aye, yes, except for the Leisure Services, 6174. Vote no.
I'm saying aye to all of them. All those pass. And I will make a motion to approve the Budget Line Item Amendment, which is on file at the City Clerk's office, and also the bills payment this week, which are $2,418,836.05. That's 2,418,836.05.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the bills payment. Any discussion or questions? Hearing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Have motion passes. Need a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second on adjournment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
But perhaps in the past, they've had a six-month license. A six-month license you cannot renew. So even if you get one every year, if it's a six-months license, it would have to be considered new. It looks like this is a years license, but maybe they're switching from what they've previously done as six-month license to now going with yearly licenses that they could start renewing. Um, the nine twenty-nine West Fifth Street, Fifth Street Sports Pub. That was previously Honeycomb Hideout. That site was previously a non-limited alcohol sales use and it was closed for more than ninety days as provided in the ordinance. So it has lost its legal non-conforming status. It's legal non-conforming for several reasons, including being in the overlay district for alcohol sales uses. Uh, so it did lose its legal non-conforming status as a non-limited alcohol sales use. The applicants have agreed to be a limited alcohol sales use, i.e. a restaurant, uh, and it meets all of their requirements as a limited alcohol sales use. Um, my, is, was there a D on the agenda?
Yeah, Randall's.
I don't have that one. So on the early agenda, I think it's a five-day license. So there's a provision in the ordinance for special events for up to five-day events. So I'm assuming it met all zoning requirements under that provision.
Okay, and then the other was, um, the, I think, three, most approved, uh, cigarette, tobacco. Is, are there any kind of restrictions or setback requirements on that that you know of?
There's nothing currently in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
I did find the assessment, it is primarily for sewer. There's a little bit of stormwater and garbage, but most of it was for sewer. Um, and it was a deal where a previous, a bank owned it and then the Secretary of Housing, um, took it over and so we legally can't assess by state code. So we had to cancel it. It was at the request of the county.
Oh, we never got paid.
Right.
Thanks.
All right, good questions, counsel. Uh, any, anything else? All right, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right, those items passed. Uh, number two in public hearings.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication, public hearing, notice of public hearing, and that's for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property generally located southeast of five hundred East Fourth Street, also known as the former American Legion property to KWWL Television, Inc., for one dollar in accordance with the development agreement.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second, all in favor.
Aye.
Pose. The hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this item or have any questions about it?
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. Um, I've been in some conversation with them and being a vet, I go down there once in a while, have a beer. My understanding is that they have to complete the kitchen before they can get the last fifty thousand. If they don't complete that by a certain date, they're gonna lose that fifty thousand. Um, I guess my question is, we can seem to afford to sell it for KWWL for a buck, why can't we pay off the Legion?
Uh, Mr. Dryer, um, uh, the, the, this is not, uh, with regards to Legion, this is the, uh, development agreement, uh, with KWWL on this particular one, but, uh, we have been working with the American Legion and will continue to do so. Um, staff has gone above and beyond the call of duty, as I explained to others, but, um, we are moving forward with working with them as well. But this issue is not related, um, to this per se.
I guess to me it is, but, okay, thank you.
Uh, yeah, okay.
Any other comments? Anyone else?
John Sherbin, seventeen fifteen, Robin Road, uh, Mayor and counsel and staff. Um, I'm, I was probably gonna ask the mayor if it'd be okay to ask for a legal opinion. If our deal isn't done with the Legion, is it still legal to transfer the property that they did have or do we, are we entitled, are, do we have the title to that? I mean, we haven't fulfilled our obligations, so I'm just curious.
When you say fulfill our obligations...
We still owe money.
Um, contractually, there were some things where the Legion had to be substantially complete to receive the last portion of that.
Right.
Um, staff has gone above and beyond the call of duty to support that, and so when they're substantially complete, um, unless counsel deems it another way, then they will receive the portion. But the question you do have, though, um, is the ability for us to continue this process. Uh, you said title deed and all those things. Do we have everything that we need to transfer this property or do what we're doing in this particular item?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Mayor, I think you stated it very nicely. I mean, the city has fulfilled all of its obligations so far under the acquisition contract and under the contract, um, with the American Legion for their relocation to a new, another site. Uh, we've also, uh, are right in pace with what we're supposed to do with the development agreement with KWWL, so yes, we are legally right where we should be.
Let me, let me, let me ask a question, just to straight, cut straight to all that. Is the paperwork in order for us to be able to proceed?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Bruce to be Kaiser, five hundred Ticklemore Street, Waterloo. I'm asking a question about, we sell a property for a dollar, I know there's a lot of legal qualifications and according to, to the business, when they buy for a dollar, there's return money back through taxes and fees and income. But I'm wondering, who goes around to check and make sure there actually being a positive return on their investment? Not allowed by the city. Thank you.
Good question. Um, Noel, uh, Mr. Kaiser would like to know, um, what are our checks and balances on making sure that they follow through, uh, with the development agreement?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So the majority of our development agreements also have tax rebates. Uh, of course, the tax rebates are, they pay their taxes and then a certain percentage is rebated back to them in the form of a check. Um, and so as a part of their paying their taxes, we get to see information that they actually paid their taxes, that they've met the minimum values, that the projects are completed as part of that rebate process. So there's a checks and balances there that, again, as they're paying their taxes in the future, to receive their rebates, we are checking the minimum values, the project completion and all that.
Noel, another question too. Um, for instance, if, um, people don't know the paperwork portion of it, um, is there a level of construction that needs to be completed and who would eye that? Is it based upon permits that they take out with engineering or whatever it is? But how do we know that visually and all those things that they complete that project?
They will have to, again, there'll be some wording in the development agreement saying substantially complete or like if it's new construction, it'll say a certain amount of square footage. Um, and then we're working with the assessor's office on the minimum value, we're working with the building department on the issuance of COs. Um, in this particular case, they're also doing it to historic standards, so we've been working with the state to make sure that they're doing this to historic standards and using tax credits and all that.
So there's some benchmarks that need to be met and your office, engineering office, there's multiple offices involved within the city to make sure they complete the project, not just from a paper standpoint, but also from a physical standpoint by the permits and all of those different things?
That is correct.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we close the hearing and file oral comments?
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. All right, that hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, adopt a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of city-owned property generally located southeast of five hundred East Fourth Street, the former American Legion property, to KWWL Television, Inc., for one dollar in accordance with the development agreement.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Counsel, do you have any questions about this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
No. Did the acquisition contract, their, the contract to buy the American Legion, did that, did that have a condemnation clause in it? In other words, if they didn't sign...
No, it did not.
They would be condemned.
It did not, no. We cannot condemn for economic development reasons, so we did not have that wording in there.
Okay. And, but did we promise them relocation assistance?
We negotiated some relocation assistance with them. Um, we actually worked with them pretty extensively and working, looking at other buildings, helping them to talk to contractors about some other buildings. Um, and they chose to go with the building that they bought and are working on that.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna make a motion to table this item until we get the American Legion taken care of. So I motion to table indefinitely.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made to table indefinitely to, um, the American Legion, takes care of what they need to take care of. Discussion? Yes, sir.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. I'd just like to note, this is a step in an approved development agreement, um, so I'm not sure of the consequences of if we did not move ahead with this as we are, um, supposed to do in accordance with the agreement that's already been approved.
Uh, conversation.
Could we have a little, I guess, more legal opinion?
Dave Zellifer, City Attorney. We have a contract, a written agreement with KWWL. Yeah, our written agreement and contract is not with the American Legion on this, this is the KWWL contract, and if we default on that, uh, then our obligations will not be met. We voted earlier, the city did, the council did, uh, on this contract, we approved it, we approved what we were going to do, and now it comes time for us to act and for us to do what we said we were going to do. Uh, by tabling this or denying it right now, we would be in breach of promise and we would be violating the contract.
Eric Schrader, City Planner. I just wanted to add, KWWL has requested that we, uh, proceed to get this conveyed to them in an expeditious as possible timeline because they are doing a land slot swap with the adjacent property owner, that they need to get the parking lot all laid out so that they can move forward with the redevelopment project that they have already commenced. And the only other thing I would, uh, comment on regarding agreements, you know, as the city attorney commented, we have a approved contract, an agreement with KWWL, there's, you know, reference to the American Legion agreement, there is a separate purchase agreement with the American Legion, which did have an incentive payment, but that incentive payment was essentially an add-on to the purchase agreement. So we have purchased the property, we have met all of the requirements of the acquisition, we have the deed, we are fee title owner of the property and have every authority to convey the property per, uh, the requirements of our other agreement and contract with KWWL. The, uh, incentive payment goes on as a separate issue, the, there is an incentive payment that's provided for, uh, in that, um, purchase agreement with the Legion, and when the Legion has satisfied the requirements of that agreement, then that payment can be made unless the council chooses to amend that agreement. The original, original agreement was a hundred thousand dollars incentive payment for remo, building a new or remodeling an existing building, including a commercial cake, commercial grade kitchen, uh, and that that payment would be made upon substantial completion. Uh, the council amended that agreement to provide them fifty thousand without being substantially complete, but with additional wording, making it clear that the final fifty thousand was upon substantial completion. Uh, there has been discussions about how to get them to that next step and how to get them that last fifty thousand, but as it sits right now, they are not substantially complete, so they're not, they have not fulfilled their side of the agreement to be able to make that last fifty thousand dollar payment. But it's two separate agreements and the purchase agreement and that incentive payment requirement have no bearing on our ability to convey the land.
Eric, quick question. If the council wanted to amend the agreement, uh, with the American Legion and go against what was originally proposed about being substantially complete and go ahead and award the other fifty thousand dollars to them, um, is that within the council's discretion to do that or how, how would that part work out?
It would absolutely be within the council's discretion, we would just have to put it on a future council agenda.
So Councilman Lynn, if you want to award them the other fifty thousand dollars, uh, regardless of where they're at in the process, that is absolutely up to the city council to, uh, to amend that and we can...
How do we get then, get that on the agenda?
You just tell, you tell me, you tell me, uh, we'll work through it and then we'll hopefully, hopefully move forward, but, um, as stated, they're, they are not, uh, at this point, uh, substantially complete, so we'd be going against.
Okay.
So we can, we can definitely talk about it.
You understand, we, we hear from both sides, so...
It's all good.
We're caught in the middle and we're trying to, so I'm, and based on that promise, I'm ready to withdraw my motion for to table.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask, so just to be clear, and I don't know if this is a question for Eric or for Mr. Zellifer, but so, so one does not have to do with the other. Uh, we proceed with this, we do not need to worry about any repercussions with the American Legion that would come back to affect this particular item. I understand we're not talking about ESIC or what, sixth and commercial, but, you know, one kinda ties to the other, so we're confident that won't be a problem.
They are related, but yes, they are separate and there's no tieback, so i-if, um, if for whatever reason, the fifty thousand dollar incentive payment was never made, there's no, the incentive payment was within the purchase agreement on the property, but it's essentially a standalone require, uh, provision that provides them incentive if they do X. And it had nothing to do with, if this doesn't happen, you get the property back. I mean, obviously, the city of Waterloo has already demolished the building, so there's no provision that, you know, depending on the outcome of that agreement, that we would have to give the property back. It's, we, we have met all of the requirements of the purchase agreement, except for the incentive payment, which as soon as they meet their requirements for the incentive payment or it's amended, then we would be ready to pay them the last fifty thousand.
And I haven't seen the documentation in quite a while, but there's nothing in there that says that at the end of this, we're gonna make sure that they're a whole, for lack of a better term?
No, there, there's been lots of discussion about that, and, I mean, and that was a desire of the American Legion, but as part of the negotiation process, ultimately, what the purchase agreement was, was a flat price for the upfront purchase and a hundred thousand dollar incentive payment upon substantial completion of the remodel. I, you know, during, before the actual finalized and signed purchase agreement, there was negotiations back and forth, they were hoping to have a, a higher, uh, flat rate, uh, purchase price without ties to, you know, a portion of it being an incentive payment, but a majority of the council, uh, did not, uh, agree with that idea and we provided a counter offer and then there, they provided a counter offer back that we ended up agreeing on, and that's the purchase agreement that's in place.
Thank you.
So Tom, we, I'll give you a call tomorrow, uh, we can sit down or whatever and try to work this back?
Get it back on the agenda. That way we can solve both problems.
Yep.
All right, so we had a motion to table indefinitely, rescind it. Uh, we have a motion to adopt a resolution that we've been talking about on the docket now. Are there any discussion that we need, counsel? Any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, that item carries. Number three.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lynn.
I move to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing, which is to amend the Martin Road development plan to expand the boundaries and include new projects, new projects and update relative information in the plan.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. All right, we are now, we now have an open hearing. Uh, is there anyone that would like to speak for or against this particular item or have questions? Please come forward.
David Dryer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. Um, is the Amy Weideman, um, building already in a TIF district? Number one. Number two is this part of, uh, the article was in a paper that was showing that they want to build apartment complex behind, along the cemetery property. Uh, so we're gonna expand the TIF, which we have asked countless times so we can release some of the TIF money to help us relieve our taxes. Uh, is that the expansion they're talking about? Uh, to expand the TIF? And I see all these figures in the paper and everything else that, that just continues to tell me that we're never gonna get a relief from the TIF. Um, Councilman Lynn has asked countless times that we release ten percent of the TIF, but we keep expanding it, we keep promising people fifty percent tax abatement. Um, it, it just goes on and on and on, and we don't seem to ever see anything. Mayor Hart, I wanna thank you for, for getting a budget where you did. Uh, there's three councilmen here that have, that did work hard on trying to get another big chunk off of the taxes, off of the property taxes. But, um, I've been here for six years now and my property taxes will probably go up again another three hundred bucks this year. They've gone up over three hundred dollars every year. You might see a for sale sign in my front yard one of these days because I'm getting tired of this. I can't continue to take it on a fixed income. But I guess my questions, like I say, are, is this gonna be another expansion of a TIF we've asked you not to do, fill in the TIF you already got? Why can't we do that? So I, I would like to answer that question. Are we expanding this TIF on Martin Road?
All right. And I think you had an additional question too, so I'll try to, uh, put that in a format. So, uh, Noel, if you would take the stand. Um, regards to the first one, the Amy Weenans, uh, is that in a TIF area?
The Amy Weenans project building would be in the existing TIF. Um, I think the, uh, easterly twenty feet of the lot that would be platted for her development would be located in this expansion area, but the entire building that she's planning to build would be in the existing TIF.
Right, and, uh, the second question, um, uh, can you explain a little bit about some parts of that property going towards the cemetery portion and then also, uh, explain, about, uh, particular apartments or apartment complex going in up in that area?
The, uh, the proposed expansion area was actually all cemetery land that, uh, the present developer talked to the cemetery. The cemetery elected to sell that land, uh, to the developer, they, they felt that they had excess land, uh, the developer wanted to take advantage of the Ridgeway frontage, um, and location, um, based on their other successful development here. So in reality, without this TIF expansion going through, this land probably would have remained in the hands of the cemetery and not paid any property taxes, um, from now till eternity. So this is good news that we're expanding the TIF here to get new taxable value in the area. So the, uh, proposed, uh, multiple family thing, I think was an older plan that they had in the one handout. Um, obviously, that area is under, uh, review now for plating and rezoning, it'll be going back to the planning commission for the plating. I do not believe that they plan on any multiple family in the lots heading on the north-south street, um, but there could be potentially some residential development up as you get closer to Jane Street.
So Noel, does the, is the cemetery pay any type of property taxes into the TIF or into the city at all?
No, they do not.
And so this is an expansion to some of that land?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, I guess my question on that would be that I see in the paper that the developer has already purchased that property. So because we're gonna make it into a TIF district, are we gonna pay them back for that property over a number of years or, or he's already bought it? Let him do his own development and give him the, the, uh, tax rebate on the development, not on the land also. We always keep, continue to do this, that we, for instance, Logan Plaza, nine point five million dollar project, and we're gonna pay him eight million dollars back over a period of time, so therefore, the developer's gonna have a million and a half dollars in a nine million dollar, nine and a half million dollar project, and we put eight million dollars in that, where's our cut of the pie?
All right, Noel, um, with regards to, uh, whatever incentives, um, how does that work for this particular item?
Obviously, we would work with it on a project-by-project basis, so we'll work with the developer as he brings forth projects, um, to get tax rebates back to those projects. Remember, the tax rebates are all rebates on taxes that we're not receiving right now because it's vacant land. So we're giving back a percentage of what we're not receiving now, so it's always an increase to the city. Obviously, some of that goes out to debt service, which helps to relieve the general fund, so there's always benefits to the entire community through development, even in the TIF districts. Just one note on the Logan Plaza comments, um, the Logan Plaza land, uh, also contains a form of Menards land, so there's actually about a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of potential value out there, not nine and a half.
Okay, but are we going to buy the land and then sell it to him for a buck?
Which land?
The, the land that these people have already bought from the cemetery, are we gonna buy it as a city?
Are we...
Over a period of time and then, and then...
Are we purchasing this property and buying and giving it to them for a dollar?
We are not purchasing it outright, we'll be working with the developer on a project-by-project basis.
So in other words, over a period of time, we're gonna have more money in it than he does. Thank you.
We'll follow our economic development policies to bring more taxable value to the city of Waterloo. Thank you.
That's fine, Noel. Thank you. Any other questions?
This TIF's district, is this economic development or is this urban renewal TIF area?
Name and address.
Forrest Dilawood, seventeen twenty-five Honeycomb Road. Everybody knows out there, Quinn.
They're on their toes back there, so. Say that question one more time for me, Forrest.
Which type of TIF is this? Economic development or urban renewal TIF?
Economic development.
Okay, so, to me, just like was stated before, it'll be twenty or thirty years before we see anything back into the general fund. Since we're expanding this TIF, could we now begin to say, okay, we're gonna take some of this TIF dollars in this new area and put it into the general fund and start getting something into the general fund? If we don't build this general fund, we're gonna be in worse shape next year than we are this year. Everything goes up, especially our taxes. Is this a time when we can do that? Can we start splitting the TIF dollars?
Well, um...
With this expansion, could we split those TIF dollars?
Um, right now, to give you an answer like that and not see, um, what particular obligations we have in this particular TIF area, plus there's also another developer in an area as well, I don't know if we can give you, uh, a solid answer on that, so...
Then if you can't give me an answer, I really think you should hold off voting on it. Thank you.
Any other questions? And, and, you know, for everybody to keep in mind, whether here or on television, uh, that's exactly what we're here for, whether we agree or not, um, these are questions from our public and we need to try to do the best of our ability to answer, so I thank you guys for asking questions. Um, is there anyone else that has questions, either for or against or, uh, just general questions? Going a second time?
I move to close hearing and receive and file oral and written comments. Do we have written comments?
None.
And recommend approval of planning, program, and zoning commission.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. All right, the hearing is now closed and comments received.
I move to adopt a resolution affirming previous determination of an area of the city to be an economic development area, determining that the development, redevelopment said area is necessary in the interest of public health, safety, or welfare, deciding said area as appropriate for urban renewal project and approving the plan amendment.
Second.
Right, motion's been made with the proper second. Questions, counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, those item, that item carried.
I move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance... I move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all properties located within the newly expanded Martin Road Development Plan area in the city of Waterloo, County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Waterloo, County of Blackhawk, Waterloo Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies, advance to and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by said city in connection with said urban renewal project.
Second. All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, timeliness issue on this item?
No. Timeliness?
Noel Anderson, Committee Planning and Development Director. Obviously, there's a lot of steps we have with going through these expansions. We do have some projects that we're working on in the area, so timeliness would be very helpful.
But Noel, could we, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Noel, could we take at least a week to get a couple other questions answered about, can we spit some money off or just?
That would be a council decision. You can definitely do that. I would just note in terms of kind of splitting the money, I mean, so that happens once a year when we send in reports to the state. So it's not like we can decide to do that mid-year at this point anyway, but.
When is that?
We'll continue to look at that.
Is that around November?
Yes.
The strip of land we're talking about to add on to the existing TIF, it's really green space, isn't it?
Yes.
I mean, there's not going to be buildings in it. It's going to be.
There will be buildings in it when it's built out. There was a plat that was going through the Planning Commission right now that would show a street heading northerly in this area that would create some smaller lots. I think they showed six smaller lots. Again, that was that map that was showing the multiple family. That was back there at one point. They changed from that plan to go with the commercial development at the southern end toward Ridgeway.
But the one, to just be clear, the one we approved, the development agreement we approved for Amy, that was not in this. We didn't need this to do her deal.
A portion of her lot will be in there, but her building is in the other TIF.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So Noel, just to be clear, you're saying something's going to happen there in the next week or two? Is that what you're saying?
We are working on projects right now.
So something's going to happen in the next week or two?
I hope so.
Okay. Be watching.
Just depends on how fast they get documents back to me.
We have additional comments?
Yeah, we do. Michelle Weidner, CFO, I want to try to answer the question that was asked about revenue. If you remember, when we worked on the TIFs earlier, I believe that the original Martin Road Economic Development Area, it has to expire in 20 years. And I think the last year we can collect TIF revenue from that is fiscal '18. And based on the outstanding obligations, I don't believe we can afford to release it earlier than that. But there will be some amount of revenue that will be released because it'll be past the expiration date after, for fiscal '19, I believe is the right year.
So in '18, there's a possibility of doing what Mr. Forrest had indicated, possibly? Fiscal '19, okay. All right. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
All right. That item carries.
I move to suspend the rules.
Second. Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
All right. That item does not pass, so please let whiners know we do support it, but it'll take another week. All right. Can we pick up item number four?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof and notice of public hearing on the U.S. 218 Video Detection Systems Mitchell Avenue to West 8 Clid Street project.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. We have a hearing open. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against or has questions about this particular item on the agenda this evening? Mark, could you assist?
Good evening. Bruce Dubicaser, 46th Mall Street. You know, what kind of video are these cameras detecting? What do they be used for specifically, please?
So the question is, what kind of, what are we detecting?
Yes.
Sandy, could you answer that question, please?
Sandy Greco, Superintendent of Traffic. These are video detection cameras which detect vehicles. They're video detection cameras that only detect vehicles. Instead of the loops being in the street or the asphalt or concrete itself, cameras take the place of the loops. So they just send the message to the controller to change the traffic signals.
So this is for traffic flow?
Yes.
All right. All right. Any other questions by anyone in the audience? Who made the original motion? Is it we?
Mr.
Motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. That hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid document, form of contract, and estimate of cost of $68,000.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made with the proper second. Counsel, any questions about this item? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right. That item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions, counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right. That item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct city clerk to read the bids.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right.
All right. There were two bids. The first bid was from General Traffic Controls of Spencer, Iowa. The bid security was in the form of a check for $2,210, 2,210.00, and the bid amount was for $40,340, 40,340.00. The second bid was from Mobo Trucks of Davenport, Iowa. Their bid bond was for 5%, and their bid amount was for $64,470, 64,470.00.
All right. And you said the bid estimate, right?
Yes. The bid estimate was $68,000.
All right. Okay. Someone take number five, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Oops, we're not done yet? I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution wording contract to General Traffic Controls of Spencer, Iowa, in the amount of $40,340.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Is that a roll call vote? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones is not here, so Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right. That item carries. Number five?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Number five is a hearing issuance of acquittal deed for Lot 10, Lot 4 of Lake Side Edition, has been canceled and rescheduled at a later date.
Any action on that?
We don't need any action. It's in the record.
Okay. All right. That is in the record. Could someone take number six for us by itself?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt, make a motion to adopt a resolution approving settlement agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice to address alleged violations of the Americans with Disabilities Act with respect to bus bench accessibility and maintenance, and authorize city attorney to execute said document.
Second. Motion's been made with the proper second. Would you like any conversation about this item?
I'd like an overview.
Yep. Craig, Craig, is that you or is that Mr. Zellerfer? Do we need to flip a coin? Not all at once. Could you talk a little bit about this and give us a short overview?
Apparently, I didn't sit far enough in the back. Craig Clark, building official. I guess the general overview, we've been working about the last three years with the Department of Justice on this agreement. It basically outlines a path for the city to take to come into compliance with our bus benches in the city of Waterloo. They basically have given us six months to develop a plan, submit that plan to them, and then from there, work on bringing those stops up to ADA compliance.
All right.
Are there any fines involved or anything at this stage?
Any fines involved?
No fines or anything. It'd be, if, just if we don't perform the work, then there could be litigation later.
And we reached out to councilpeople as well to help facilitate this particular process. Councilman Lynn and also Councilman Welper as well will be providing assistance as we go through this process to come up with the plan to meet our obligations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Craig, I just want to be very clear. We are under no obligation to have any bus benches if we don't want to.
Correct.
We can have 500.
Yep.
We can have zero.
Yep. One of the lines in the agreement specifically spells out that we are not required to have 130 or 10 or 2 or whatever. It's, we can have zero if we choose.
All right. Any other questions about this item? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Okay. That item carries. Take number seven by itself. I should have did them both, but I didn't.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Number seven is a resolution approving a professional service agreement with AECom of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $75,000 in conjunction with the Waterloo bus stop locations, ADA design, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Sure.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Do you want to explain a little bit of the nuts and bolts of this?
So I guess we have been working on this for quite some time. So this would actually design the first 27 bus stops. I'm going to call them at this point because we're not exactly sure on all the details. But this actually gets the concrete work done to make those ADA accessible with the slopes, the ramps connecting to sidewalks, things like that is what this first contract with AECom will do. We, this is the top number of passengers that ride. We got those numbers from Met Transit, so that's how this list was developed by their top number of pickups, basically.
So this has, the grading, sloping, all of those things are involved?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Craig, but would we be prudent to wait until we decided exactly how many bus benches we're going to have instead of paying for 27 to be designed? Or should we design them and then if we only have 10 that we haven't designed? Or, I mean, I wasn't involved, so.
Sure.
Asking you as a professional. Is this, is 27, based on your expertise, the number we really have to have? Forgetting about the money.
Yeah.
Morally, do we need 27? Can we afford 27?
Maybe that's the bigger, that's probably the question, I think, Tom, is, I think we can afford the 27. Maybe I should put it that way. I think that number, what we actually need for the community, may be higher than 27. But I think right now, that's probably what we can afford. I think it's kind of how we more base this. It was looked at as, some of these are, you know, even on private property, so those are not included in this, but we can work with those other people to get stops there too. But I think right now, and this is going back, you know, over the last few years, we thought we would have to have some sort of bus benches for the citizens of Waterloo. And this was our phase one, maybe you want to call it, of that program.
So we're being, this number of 27?
I think would be a minimum.
This is cautious number.
Yeah, I do.
And so, but, so there's other, there's other things that we need to adhere to going towards in the future. So that's why council's input and having this ad hoc committee is absolutely important because one of the challenges we've had was in relation to snow removal?
Yeah.
And making sure that there's some accessibility for people that can't get around in the snow. I think you got the preliminary information from Met in regards to the most frequent stop. So this could possibly be the first phase to get us to that point and then start to work there. But we will probably be listening to the direction of the ad hoc.
Yeah. And that's exactly right. I mean, you have to remember, the complaint was filed based off snow removal not being done at the bus benches. So that was the complaint that was filed with the Department of Justice. That's fine, but if we remove snow off of grass, it's still not ADA compliant once we do that. So that's where it kind of, the original complaint was just for the snow removal, but once the Department of Justice came here and looked at all our sites, they said they have to be ADA compliant. So that's where the hard surfacing and that kind of stuff came in.
And then two other things to add to that point. And then two other things to add to that point. One being that if you ever rode by and saw some of the bus benches, some of them may have been in deplorable conditions. I've had to make calls before where it was, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't sit on one of them because they didn't stand up right. So I think this is an opportunity to get a better product as well moving forward, whether it's steel, whether it's concrete, whether it's wood, you know, those decisions will be made. And then number two, if you remember, there was also advertising that was placed on those particular bus benches as well. So this will be a good opportunity for us to dialogue, to see if this is something that we want to utilize as a revenue source or if we want to outsource or however we want to do it. But it'll be good conversation for us to, to meet our requirements with the ADA as well as some of the nuances that I mentioned a couple of seconds ago.
Mr. Mayor? Having nothing to do with the ADA and having nothing to do with bus benches. But I think either on Olympic or Downing or someplace I heard where we had to redo these ramps two times, maybe three times because of street construction and the, you know, the level, the pitch or whatever changed. These 27, I mean, are we going to take that all into account about any current or soon to be upcoming street reconstruction at some of these locations? I mean, is everybody communicating on this?
Yeah, and I mean, probably the best example is that we pulled the university ones off just to start with, just because we're not sure what the university happened, knew is happening with it. So we haven't been working with engineering to work on any street reconstruction or overlays like that to take that into consideration. And I think you might be talking, Steve, I think in 2010 ADA adopted a new standard and that standard changed those slopes and grades. And so that's probably, I think, where some of that came into effect when the timeframe between before 2010 and after 2010.
Good question. Yes, sir.
Craig, bus benches are used by everybody in Waterloo as part of public transit and waiting for Met bus to arrive for the most part. And I guess my question is, you know, when we're talking about this and compliance with ADA, is anybody from the ADA Compliance Commission on and been contacted or been part of this decision-making process, such as Bruce?
We have talked about it. I guess one of the other jobs I have is I am on the ADA Commission. So we have brought it up several times at our ADA Commission and have been keeping them somewhat informed on the process. The settlement agreement, though, kind of starts the whole process, like Mayor Hart said, is we will start the process and we have six months to come up with a plan. The, I personally have been working with AECOM to, before this settlement agreement, we even had a date on the settlement agreement to start these first 27 bus benches. More or less, we're trying to get something done maybe ahead of time is what we were trying to do to help that process. So we'll keep the ADA Commission informed and work with them on what they think and different things like that.
And I guess I'm saying this because I would hope that somebody such as Bruce, I'm not saying Bruce necessarily, but Bruce would be a perfect example of somebody who I think that we could benefit from his thoughts and ideas on where benches should go, how many and that kind of stuff, Craig.
All right. Any other questions, council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, that item passes. Someone take eight through 10?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Item number eight is adopting a resolution approving submission of grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs for the Paul Cloverdel Forensic Science Improvement Grant Program. Item number nine is adopting a resolution authorizing submission of application to Blackhawk Gaming Association for grant funding for up to $15,000 for the 50% match of departmental funds to purchase hostage crisis negotiation equipment. And item number 10 is adopting a resolution approving Home Investment Partnership Program Consortium Cooperation Agreement for the City of Cedar Falls, Iowa for the period of July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2020, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said agreement.
Second.
Right, motion's been made with the proper second. Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
With number 10, I was looking through that and it says it's a five-year program, but then this is only for three years. And then also part of it dealt with the allocation of funds and it was like on a 50-50 basis with in each city. And I'm wondering why that is, given our population is quite a bit larger than the other city involved here.
Mr. Jones?
Rudy Jones, Community Development Director. We have a number of the specific funding allocations broken out, so it's not exactly 50-50. Once we take out some primary administration funds, once we take out some CHODO funds, which is our community housing development organization, operation, not operation threshold, but Habitat for Humanity, then we divide the remaining funds. It's actually, at the end of the day, about a 60-40 split. The consortium gives us a larger amount of home funds that we would not receive if we didn't have the consortium.
So the federal government likes to see some type of partnership with regards to this allocation?
It's based primarily on our size, our population. The home funds designate certain direct dollars to communities with certain populations. Because we are partnership with Cedar Falls, we get those direct funds. If we did not have the consortium, we would have to apply for our home funds through the state as some of our local smaller cities do, Evansdale, which applies through their inter cog resources.
So Rudy, if you take out, if you take out those, like Habitat for Humanity and that, that remaining amount, that split between Waterloo and Cedar Falls, or is that not correct?
I'm not sure what your question is.
Well, I saw that there were different amounts that were, where it was divvied up. And my question was at the very end, when the allocation is given to the cities, is that, is there an amount that then is split equally between Waterloo and Cedar Falls?
After we've taken out specific splits, yes. We get an administrative piece that Cedar Falls doesn't get for administering the home funds. We get the CHODO amount, which is 15% that Cedar Falls don't get. And then we split the remaining balance.
Okay, okay. And this is a three-year program. And then in the documents that were attached, it talks about it being, I mean, the resolution is for three years, but then it talks about it being a five-year program.
It's a five-year program because we have to recertify our, our five-year plan and we missed these remaining three years. So we just kind of plan to catch up with the time period.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
All right, those items carry, 11 through 13.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Welper.
Number 11 is a resolution approving an amendment to the Development Agreement with Three Stooges LLC to amend dates due to a new timeline of project and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute documents. Number 12 is a resolution approving an amendment to a development agreement with GMJ2 LLC to swap Phase 1 and Phase 3 and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute documents. 13 is a resolution approving our request by the Waterloo Regional Airport to release 13.79 acres of airport property generally located at the intersection of Wagner Road and Airline Highway with an appraised value of $209,600 to the City of Waterloo, Iowa for continued development and to direct the mayor and city clerk to execute all formal land release documents as required and submit said documents to the Federal Aviation Administration for further approval. Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Any discussion on these items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could somebody explain the number 11?
No.
And part of that is why, why does it go to 2037?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Essentially, the reason for moving the dates back is they just got caught by the weather this last year and didn't get the property going, the project going yet. The Minimum Assessment Agreement is basically set out to be twice the amount of years of tax rebates they get. So we calculate that. So by moving it back initially when they're going to have it completed, we move it back further when the Minimum Assessment Agreement will go to.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So Noel, quick question then. So development agreements can be amended, modified?
Yes, they can.
Changed?
Yes.
And what's our criteria? It's mutual benefit? Is that how we do it?
Correct. There's actually wording in the development agreements that's pretty standard that talks about it for some reason that they're, they're not within the timeline or something like that by mutual agreement. We'll go ahead and amend it to keep the project going.
Okay.
Because obviously we're looking at it. If the project's still viable, we want to see it move ahead.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
All right, could someone take number 14 by itself?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution authorizing the issuance of $9,750,000 in general obligation urban renewal bonds and levying a tax for the payment thereof as included in the certified budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017.
I forgot 15 too, I'm sorry.
Okay, and then number 15 is a resolution approving grant applications to the RJ McElroy Trust in the amount of $25,000 and to the Max and Helen Guernsey Charitable Foundation in the amount of $15,000 to support the Mayor Hart Summer Youth Job Program.
Second.
Right, motion's been made with the proper second. Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
With all due respect, and don't, I don't want anybody to take this wrong. Should that, in number 15, should that be to support the City of Waterloo Summer Youth Program, Job Program? Would that be more appropriate? Since it's a citywide, approved by the council, paid by the taxpayers?
I don't necessarily know if we could, the name is the name. But I mean, if someone wanted to have, have a program called Jean-Claude, I mean, it's, it's, that's the name I decided to make. Do you have a problem with the name?
I just, I just brought, just a suggestion I heard from constituents.
Okay.
And I just threw it out for
Okay, that's fine.
Discussion. Or no discussion?
I mean, I guess it will be up to me to change it if I'm not mistaken, right? Or council can say, no, don't call it something.
I think, Mr. Mayor, I think it's fine. You are the mayor of Waterloo, after all.
It's a, it's a council's decision. Any other questions?
I don't have a problem with it, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And then I just forgot to add on number 15. My whole goal with that is try to make sure we put children in productive situations and provide them another alternative to being out on the streets but earning some employability skills and income as well. Number 16.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to receive file and consider and pass for the third time and adopt an ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in Section 10-4-4, approving a rezone of certain property on a request by Christian Community Development or House of Hope to rezone approximately 0.71 acres of land from R4 multi or multiple residence district to C1 neighborhood commercial districts for the purpose, purposes of establishing a group home with office space located at 845 West 4th Street.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions about this item? This is the third time for this one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
No, you were going to, and you don't have to get up, but I'm just reminding you, you were going to send me whether a payday loan could be in a C1.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, I apologize, I did not get to that and thought of it today when we were looking at this. A payday loan and a pawn broker are not allowed to the C2, so they would not be allowed in the area being rezoned.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, number 17.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to receive, file and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance rescinding subsection 1 Blackhawk Street to section 568, two-hour parking between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., except Saturday and Sunday. And that subsection 1A Commercial Street in section 568 be renumbered to Pair 1. And this is for an ordinance amending the 2008 traffic code by rescinding subsection Pair 1 Blackhawk Street to section 568, two-hour parking between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., except Saturday and Sunday.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Any, any questions about this item, council?
Mr. Mayor, is that to solve the parking problem for the bus drivers for the school district down by the old bus garage?
Andy?
Sandy Greco, Superintendent of Traffic. Yes, this is why there's another ordinance after this one.
Okay.
All right, I think we have a question, comment?
Charlie, Mr. 319 Center Street. I work for Durham School Services. We moved to that new site on Blackhawk this school year. We have one off-street parking lot for employees with 27 spaces. So most of our employees have been parking on Blackhawk and the side streets until the neighbors got upset because there's too many of us. And so this is when this ordinance passed. When this one passed, we only have a few employees that don't work over two hours at a time that can park out on Blackhawk now. Then no parking signs were parked, put on 14th Street where we can park. We have 120 employees and not enough parking. We have the neighbors in an uproar, the employees have been unhappy, and we need someplace to park. And my understanding from our manager is that we can go down and park in that little bitty parking lot that used to be animal control, but that's still not enough parking. We'd like to know the old lot that's fenced in down by the gas pumps, if that's still owned by the city, because some of us have suggested that that'd be an ideal parking lot for the rest of us so the neighbors can quit being unhappy.
So you, you want?
Would ask that you, if you pass it on the first reading, don't pass it on the second and third. For this one.
Okay, thank you.
It's been a real hardship on everybody over there.
Okay.
Roger Mishler, 319 Center. I also work for Durham. I drive school bus. And this is a situation we've been put in where we've got, I'll say, 125 employees. I spoke to our office manager today and she says we need 30 more. I spoke to Mark Little, manager of the Met. And I've spoke to the homeowners across the street from Met. And I understand, because that's where I park. The ladies have a hard time maybe seeing back and out of their driveways with cars parked there and what have you. But I think it's a good idea to have put no parking on the south side of that street and allow parking where there's no parking. Now, on the north side along Met between 13th and 14th and also down between 12th and 13th. There's five driveways and now two stretches of blocks where there's none on the north side. So you'd have a better situation there for people coming and going out of the homeowner's drives. The buses that have a bigger turning radius making those corners and you'd have more parking for us guys, you know? Because Mark said he knew this was going to be a problem before it ever happened because nobody from, and the school system owns that property we're at. But I don't think anybody for the entire school system has to park on the city streets. So they didn't really plan too well for this. You know, you guys have changed the ordinance. This would be the third or fourth time. But I would just leave that out there for suggestion. It'd probably be a good idea. It wouldn't cost anything. It'd be better for everybody.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Questions, council? Thoughts? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
I had a question on that, I guess. So Mr. Mishler was saying that he thinks there is room if the employees park on the north side of Blackhawk Street. But I think the resolution says, or the ordinance says that there's probably not room if the employees park on that street. So is it the problem with the school buses getting through that street? Or what, what is the situation with the room on that street?
Okay, the situation is, is that when there are oncoming traffic, say a Met bus and a school bus, they cannot pass. One has to wait if there's parking on one side of the street. It's a safety issue. It's not who can park where. I've also worked with the school bus garage and the manager. They offer a shuttle to take, if people will park under the bridge down by 6th Street where city vehicles park, that they will offer, they offer a shuttle to come down and pick people up and take them back to the bus garage. So, I mean, I've been working with her on this also. So it's, it's more of a safety issue than it is who's parking where.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mishler, normally we only allow one comment, but I think you have comments in regards to what you just heard. So please go ahead.
In six months, I think we've had one person use it. The company wants to pay us by the minute. And you've got 125 people coming, all driving separately because the routes all start at different times. Yeah, some like to get there, or at least, you know, sit around, have a cup of coffee. Most of them want to get there two minutes ahead of time, clock in, go to the bus. And then the reverse, all the routes get done at a different time. So how are you going to have a bus when they come back maybe spread out over a half hour or more? You know, nobody wants to sit around. They want to get there and leave. So shuttling is not the answer unless we park at the ad building and let them handle it.
That was her answer to me.
All right, well, you know, just, yeah, provided, from his perception, a realistic look at actually what happens as being on the employee side trying to work. Council, any other questions? Let's continue on with that roll call.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Mr. Hart, I have a question then. If we suspend the rules on this one to make sure everybody's on the same page, does that affect the second ordinance? Because aren't we, are we just kind of switching no parking areas? So, we, do we have to tie these together? If we suspend the rules, can we not even consider the next one?
If you suspend these rules, then the, all the signs come down for the two-hour parking. If you approve this one, okay, the signs come down, then they're allowed to park anytime on the south side of the street.
Which one? Is that what they want?
No.
No?
No, they, what they're asking is to allow this to happen, but then allow parking on the north side where there's no parking at this time. So, it's just switching sides, really.
But this will take down all the no parking sites?
On the south side, in certain blocks, it'll take down the two-hour parking, or two-hour no parking.
But then we need to pass the second ordinance for the head-to-head traffic?
Right.
The bus traffic?
Yes.
So, we could, we could pass this and start fixing the problem, and then we could work on this later?
If that's what you vote on, yes.
I wish I had a visual of where these things are.
And I can, I can do that and email that to you.
Or should we suspend the rules and so we have a week to make sure we're all looking at the right thing?
Mr. Schmidt?
We can do that.
What?
I mean, is it gonna?
No, everything will stay the way it is right now.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Sandy, but I thought the lady that spoke said that she didn't want this to get one, two, and three tonight. I thought that's what I heard her say.
That's what she said, yes. She doesn't want it passed tonight.
Not that they, as Mr. Lynn said, it'd be nice to have, you know, a little bit better understanding of what's going on here with a visual, so, okay.
So, anyway, I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Before, a question I have is, I heard them talking about the need for more parking, and isn't that sort of what the issue is where they, where they have access to parking? Is there, are there spaces like what they were referring to that are available down there that maybe are city-owned property as opposed to school-owned property?
You're talking about where the gas pumps are, you mentioned there's a fenced-in area?
Right.
Noel, Craig, who can, who can speak to? Mark Rice, somebody, anybody, some, today?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, there is some space down there that we'd have to look at to see what options we're using it for today, what options we have obligated in the future. We had a multiple-party development agreement in that area with Met and with the Waterloo schools for different things to happen, so we'll have to kind of go back and clarify where everything's at on those and what our current use is as well.
So, Noel, there, that is a possibility for additional parking space for the people that had spoken here in the future to use so it alleviates the parking issues they're talking about?
It is a potential, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Noel, so, are you estimating 10 spots, 100 spots? Do you have any kind of idea?
I would guess, if there's 27 on the other area, I would guess it would probably be about 30 to 40 spots.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules on the floor right now. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Welper?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
All right, let's move on to eighteen.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Item eighteen is a motion received, filed, considered, and passed for the first time, an ordinance amending Section 572, no parking 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. by adding 1 Blackhawk Street southwest side from West 12th Street to West 14th Street, southwest side from West 15th Street to West 18th Street, and renumbering West Fifth Street to 2. And that's regarding an ordinance amending the 2008 Traffic Code by amending Section 572, no parking 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. by adding 1 Blackhawk Street southwest side from West 12th Street to West 14th Street, and southwest side from West 15th Street to West 18th Street.
Can we get a second, maybe?
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Do we need any discussion on this? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to suspend the rules. Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Welper?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
All right, motion fails. All right, that's the end of the formal council meeting. It's time for oral presentations, and I think I have one from Mr. Jim Chapman in regards to a comment made at last week's meeting. I did?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Yes, sir.
There was a comment made last week out of the audience about, Jim Chapman, 224 Birch, thank you. Anyway, he said, "I sure hope those back row boys don't get up and talk." And it kind of took it to heart, if you would, Dan, would you please? That some of the things that we talk about, I listed. One of them is the tax levy rate, franchise fees, stormwater runoff fees, operation threshold, that's a good one. I think we paid twice, I think they got paid twice for that building under the flood plan, and then the city bought it, and then all of a sudden, here we come, and we found it had asbestos in it. And then the house not too far from operation threshold, a $40,000 house that we paid $85,000 for. And then moving the credit union from the Second Street over to Mullen, I think that cost us double what we expected to have it cost us. Grandview Motel property, I think that was a million, a million and a half. I mean, we got a lot of money involved in just these few items right here. And then we got the Johnstone Building. Then we got the building on Fifth and Jefferson that we're paying $1,200 a month to, to, I believe, the ex-city attorney for storing lawnmowers. And then we got the House of Hope. Then we got the African-American Museum on Logan, nothing being done with these. Then we're concerned about change orders. We got Sunnyside South. And then we're robbing the Rainy Day Fund again, robbing Peter to pay Paul to keep the taxes low to make everybody look good. And then we got the TIF. And out on Ridgeway, I believe, a real estate lady came up here a week or two ago, and I believe you asked her for her address, Mayor, and she turned and looked at her lawyer, and then she gave her business address. So, when I got home, I looked up her address. She lives in the city west of us, which means Cedar Falls. So, here we go again, we got another business coming in here with a person that lives in Cedar Falls that's gonna hire people that'll probably live in Cedar Falls. We probably won't get any tax money on property being sold to them or any property tax. So, I mean, it is just a few of the things that the back row boys are concerned about, and we get up here and we talk about it, and I think a lot of people don't realize that we are concerned with what's going on in our city. And the person that talked about this, that brought this subject up, I think we see this person at a, at the city council meeting maybe once a year or when it's in the best interest of this person. So, thank you for listening to me, and I just wanted to bring up some of our back row boys' concerns.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna give these to the clerk to put those on file. Any other, any other questions this evening? Yes, sir, Mr. Kazner?
Good evening again. Hi, Mr. Big Kazner, 500 Sycamore Street, Waterloo. I want to say thank you to all the concerned citizens of Waterloo, and also the street and sidewalk boards here in Waterloo for the good job they did for this year's winter snow removal. Right now, we're forecast to have another last snowstorm later on this week. Hope and pray that those don't just melt naturally by itself, but actually take time to reconsider it and help the people that can't get around so easy to have access. Thank you kindly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Dryer?
You said my name, so I'll have to give him my address?
Nah.
David Dryer, 3145 West Fourth Street. I clipped a lot of different things out of the paper, and some time ago, I remember an article I left at home, I guess, but I'm back on TIF. Fate of Davenport Housing Tax Incentive being debated by the council there. Osage did this some time ago, and they, the council got to figuring how much money they were gonna have in this particular piece of property, like I stated a while ago with the Logan Avenue Park, and they turned it down. Davenport is considering turning down new housing, housing remodels that are in certain areas, TIF, Kira, Clura, whatever, because they're realizing that they, as the city, have more money invested in these properties than the investor does. So, I want you guys to consider that and start looking into other cities. We can look at it for how much we're paying employees. We don't look at it for how much taxes are, but all these different things we can look at other cities about, these are, Davenport's considerably larger than us, and they're thinking that this TIF stuff is not that big a deal, it's not helping the taxpayer, and I'm one of those. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Couple comments, please.
We have one more, one more person if you can hold on.
John Sherbin, 1750 Robben Road, Mayor and Council and Staff. With regards to the Legion guys, the staff has filled me in on a lot of information. The council's done some heavy-duty checking on this, too, and I've also talked with a lot of the boys involved down there. One of the things that we cannot probably tell you is that that's a very urgent problem that they have. This isn't something that we, either we're gonna tell them we are not gonna pay them or we're gonna pay them. They're way behind, they've had some bad advice from a lot of different people, not necessarily from the city or whatever, or they didn't understand, or we didn't understand how to tell them, or something. But after much discussion with these folks, and the mayor, he filled me in on a lot of good information, as well as Eric and the guys, too. They're behind and they're in trouble. And one of the things that was brought up, that they, the reason that they sold that building was the fact that WMT quite a few years ago moved out, I think it was WMT or WHO, somebody, moved out of the city of Waterloo, and they didn't want that to happen. That's why they let us do a KWWL deal. So, I think we some have some responsibility because they manned up and said, hey, this is what we want, we want to protect Waterloo. And no matter what the deal was or how it was crossed, it was explained to me by them that the only reason they bought this building was because the only one they could afford. Now, I don't, I'm not trying to get anybody in any kind of trouble or anything because I don't know, because there's so much confusion from both sides. But I think we need, or we're obligated to help them. Now, I don't know what we're gonna do or when we're gonna do it, but we need to do it soon because they've got bills, and they got people coming to get their stuff. So, I cannot implore you people enough to, if we're gonna do it, let's get it on agenda and get it done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Councilman Jacobs?
Couple comments, if I may. Appreciate this list here. I don't like to single people out, but since the comment was made, you know, I think we should keep in mind we're about creating jobs in Waterloo, and that's really the big picture to provide our future growth. And I think Noel Anderson has done a great job on the Ridgeway development, moving land that paid zero property taxes to a taxable base for us. That's a win-win for the city. The person that we're referring to in this case created 22 jobs so far, this development's gonna create another 10. 32 jobs is a lot, and that adds up to a lot of, a lot of possibilities for the city. So, I want to thank Noel for his good work on that project. And secondly, I just want to kind of throw this out for maybe a future conversation, but I really think we should talk about supporting our local contractors that bid on city projects. You know, we have, we had a local contractor, really good contractor, that employs 33 people. Most of those folks live in Waterloo and help support the city and bidding on a job. And, you know, I, you know, firmly believe that we should buy from our own customers, and we should buy from each other, and especially local contractors. We should give them some type of preference when they bid on jobs for the city.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I got a couple things. One, just to follow up on what Councilman Jacobs said, we haven't talked about this, I don't think, for a few years, but a number of our neighbors have local preference policies, and I think that it might be time for us to take another look at that. So, I'm not sure whose job that would be to see what's done in other places, because I do think that, as Councilman Jacobs said, these are the, you know, the business owners we go to every time we want to support for an event or something in the city or in the schools. And so, I do think it's only fair that we treat our local contractors like other cities do, and I think most of the other cities are having some, some level of local preference, some 1%, 2%, something like that. So, I think that's something we should take a look at. Then the other thing I just want to comment on is, I got a letter, and I think all the rest of the council, and I believe you also, and I'm not sure who else, got a letter or copied this letter from Martha Zuck regarding the camper situation. Did you get a copy of that on Randolph Street?
Maybe, I'm not sure.
I thought they said they sent it to everybody. But the dilemma is, they've got a camper, but they're in a neighborhood with no side yard, no alley, no place to park this camper other than their driveway. And so, we have this ordinance that I believe has been on the books for a number of years, and I believe we talked about this maybe last year, and the primary purpose of that ordinance was a safety issue, and then also possibly a, you know, neighborhood appearance issue or something like that. And I guess it just, I'd like to ask maybe if we could have a work session at some point down the road to take another look at this, because the safety issue I get if it's on a corner or if it's the driveway's short enough that you park the camper, and so then you can't see when a car's pulling out and somebody's gonna get hit. But if the house has an adequate driveway, I don't see the safety aspect of that. And then as far as the appearance goes, it seems to me when I drive around Waterloo, I see campers and boats and a variety of things out in front driveways, and it seems like we're doing selective enforcement of our ordinance. And majority of these campers and boats, by and large, are, you know, as attractive or more attractive than, than some of our houses. So, I don't know that that's a valid point either. So, it seems like maybe this is something we might want to take another look at, and, you know, maybe we make certain areas of the city where there is no other option for these folks to park their boats or park their trailers or whatever, because they have no alley, they have no side yard, they have no place else to put them, that maybe we give them some kind of an allowance or something from spring to fall, so that they're not sitting out there all year long. Just a suggestion.
So, I'll say, some people may be able to afford $50,000 boats, and some people may be able to afford $25,000 houses, so won't comment on that part. But I think it's probably a good opportunity, Noel, if you would direct Eric to bring that ordinance back. uh, to bring that ordinance back, and maybe we have a work session to take a look and see if it's, uh, at the point where we need to make some changes. And I will work with, um, I don't exactly know who it would be to work on, um, the local preference policies, um, you know, in this effort to save money. Um, we'll definitely have to take a look at, uh, that local preference, so we'll get that, uh, within the next month on the agenda as well, so you can all discuss it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
City Planner, Eric Schrader, Code Enforcement, Maria Teller, and I spent a year rewriting the parking ordinance in property. We presented to the council, and you voted it down. So, we're back to the old policy that we have, with the old ordinances. That's where it's at.
So, uh-
First time to take a look at it again, be my guest.
So, um, Eric, Noel, if you could, um, work with that again, and let's, at least on that particular portion of it, uh, take a look. Uh, we'll work on the local preference. Uh, they entertain a motion.
Motion adjourned.
Uh, motion to receive and follow oral comments and adjourned by Councilman Schmidt. Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.